Good evening. This is the Ashland Planning Board on January 6, 2021. This, we are meeting remotely. Due to the current COVID-19 pandemic, the governor has issued emergency order number 12 that waived the location requirement of public officials at a public meeting. This meeting is being conducted electronically via Zoom and that information for connecting was posted with the agenda on the website, at the town hall, and at the post office. This meeting is being recorded. I would like to call this meeting to order. And roll call attendance, Paula Hancock.
Present.
Kathleen DeWolf.
Present.
And Margene Badger, Chair, also present. Also with this, with our staff is Susan McLeod, our Land Use Assistant. The first, the first order of business at tonight's meeting is actually a public hearing, which was posted with the agenda. So I would like to open the public hearing at 6:32 for the Town of Ashland Commercial Excavation Regulations. This is for the interest of the public. This is a new ordinance for the Town of Ashland that is replacing an old ordinance on commercial earth excavation regulations. The old ordinance was back in the early 1980s. It is now totally revised and it is totally revised to comply with the New Hampshire RSA Chapter 155-E, which governs local regulation excavations. So we have totally, as I said, totally revised our old regulations. And this was a public hearing to be able to answer any questions that members of the public might have. And I'm going to ask, is there anyone here that has any questions? I'm not sure that there, I do believe that probably our visitors tonight are here for other issues. But however, the complete text of the proposed regulations are also on the town website. They're linked on the front page and they're linked with the event on the calendar. They will also be linked on the planning board page of the town website. The public hearing is a required part of a, of this type of regulation. The, these, this proposed commercial excavation regulations do not go to a town vote at a, at the SB2 meeting, however, they are not on the ballot. This is the type of regulation that after a public hearing can be approved by, directly by the planning board. So again, if, does anybody have any comments or questions?
Susan. I just, I just want to comment that I did send a copy of the draft and encouraged the only current operating sand pit in town to submit either written comments or attend this meeting if he had any, any input whatsoever. And we have not gotten a response, so.
Okay, okay. So at this point, I will close the public hearing at 6:34. And we will move on to the next item on the agenda. The next item on the agenda, we have the minutes of December 23 to approve. Do I have a motion to do that?
Some questions, Margene.
Yes.
Under the Scrivener building update, you have three people. You have both the plan board met briefly with John Wooden, Watson Wooden, and Todd Owen. He did not participate in the meeting. He was, he joined the meeting but made a comment. So he was not part of the discussion about the founding line application.
No, but I, but I do know he was there for that particular
Okay.
part of the discussion, but we can make note that he did not participate in the discussion. We can, we can adjust that.
That, that I will make a motion to accept the amended December 23, 2020, planning board minutes.
And do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Moved and seconded to approve the minutes of December 23, 2020. Roll call vote, Paula Hancock.
Aye.
Kathleen DeWolf.
Aye.
And Margene Badger, aye. They are approved. Okay, the next item we have on the agenda is Mr. John Volpe with Commerce Properties. You wanted to have a discussion about, I believe, your property off West Street. Is that correct?
Winter Street.
Winter Street, I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah.
Wrong W. Okay, I do have again, for information for the public, this is this concerning the property that was just recently transferred or in the process of being transferred from the town to you?
It's part of it, so that's contiguous to two other properties.
Okay, I do have the plot plan that was used for that process. So if we have any questions that we need to look at that for, I can put that up. But if you could, if you would like to start off, what questions you have or what you would like to tell us?
Yeah, sure, no, thanks so much for making room for me on the agenda. So I just wanted to propose an idea and get your feedback and guidance. And you know, if there was something that you were supportive of and we thought that the project was viable, then of course we'd come back with a more detailed proposal with, you know, all kinds of specifics around the size and design and utilities and so forth. But the idea is to build some single level accessible and affordable rental units on, on one of our Winter Street properties. And so what I really want to do in this case is incorporate universal design features, right? So that the, the, the units would accommodate, you know, any physical limitations that any tenant, elderly or disabled or otherwise might, might have. And so, you know, the thought is to do single level accessible units. The proposed site is, is on our property at 14 Winter Street, which is 1.89 acres. It has an existing six-unit building with a footprint of about 4,500 square feet. So it occupies about 5.5% of the, of the land area.
Okay.
But that property abuts two other properties, right? One of which is 10 Winter Street, which is one of our five-unit buildings. That's a .41 acre lot. And then it, it also abuts the .77 acre lot, which is the one you referenced, right? Which was recently acquired from the town. So if you take the combined three contiguous and, you know, closely aligned lots, it's, it's 3.08 acres. In existing, the existing total building footprints would be about 7,700 square feet. So it, the buildings occupy about 5.7% of the total land area.
Okay.
And so just as an example, if we were to add five two-bedroom units of 750 square feet each, right? That would occupy another 3,500 square feet of, of land area, which would, you know, still bring the total coverage of that land area to only 8.3%. So just to, just to sort of put it in, in scale.
How many units did you say you're thinking about? How many units did you say you're thinking about adding?
I was thinking five two-bedroom units.
Okay.
There's no magic to the, to the five. I think it would be, if we, you know, if we all thought it made sense and could do it, I would, I would do more.
Okay.
So Tony Randall has surveyed the property, all three properties.
Yes.
So, you know, so we've got good, exact measurements and dimensions and boundaries and so forth. And Tony Gaiet has been out there with me to look, you know, assess the, the building possibilities and sites and so forth. It's, it's a really level site. It's already got good access from Winter Street, right? Because we have an existing wide driveway, so there's no need for any new curb cut or access or anything of that sort. There was a right-of-way actually over this driveway, right, to the vacant land. But you know, now that, that vacant lot is effectively part of the, part of our Winter Street site, right? So the driveway just serves the, the rear unit of number 10 Winter and the rear unit of 14 Winter. And there's also, you know, there's already electric, there's water, there's sewer. The lines are already there at the location. There's plenty of room for parking, so I think we, you know, there'd be little or no need to, to clear trees. I think there'd be some, some grading and drainage work and, and, you know, at least a portion of the proposed site would be within 250 feet of the, the wetland area right at the bottom of that vacant lot. And so, you know, obviously there'd be whatever applicable shoreland zoning protocols or permits would be required there. But the, you know, the thought was maybe two or three separate one-level buildings with a two or three units in each. And that, that configuration would be, you know, really low profile. It would look better, you know, provide more privacy for tenants. I think it would help with the site's grading and drainage. And that, you know, the units would probably be built on a, you know, over crawl space or maybe even on a slab. But, you know, it's a very convenient in-town location. It's, it's adjacent to and actually between, right? Two of our well-maintained multifamily properties, one a six-unit, one a five-unit. So, you know, the proposed usage would be very consistent with the, with the area. And, you know, I would hope would continue to meet the, you know, the, the need for affordable and accessible rental housing in town. There, there are a couple of abutters. Tom Peters is in the back right. I'm not, I'm not actually sure who's on the other side. Did have a chance to chat with Tom and he was very enthusiastic about the idea. But I think those are the, the two abutters there. But let me, you know, let me stop there, but that's just sort of a quick overview. But I just wanted to get your reactions and, you know, any questions you had. And if, if it were something that you were supportive of, you know, sort of some guidance as to, you know, what would, what would our next steps be?
Okay, I've got a couple of questions first, and I, I think the rest of the board will also have some questions.
Sure.
First of all, the new piece that you just acquired, which is at the back end of 14 Winter Street, is that going to be merged with the 14 Winter Street property? Is that going to be merged with that to become all one piece of property?
So I, I suppose it could be. At the moment, it's separate. It's held by the same entity, Commerce Properties LLC.
And.
But it, I, I suppose if, if that were helpful or necessary, that's certainly something we could entertain. The, the site that we're talking about actually does not, doesn't, doesn't go that far out to the land. So that land would continue to be vacant.
Right, right. Susan, I want to ask you a question. You've had a little more experience with this type of thing. When you look when you look at area on a lot, and obviously there are standards and, and criteria for the size of a lot and how much of the lot can be covered, numbers of units and so on. But if they're separate lots, they each have to be treated separately. Is that correct, Susan?
Yes, I mean, it, it does seem tricky that the abutters would be the same property owner. In some ways, a voluntary bird, lot merge, which would be easy enough to do, might make it easier because then you can look at the, the whole area as a whole. You don't have to worry about any setbacks of boundaries because if they remain two lots in the future, it could possibly be that there are two separate owners to them.
Right.
So taking that into account. And then as far as defining buildable, because you're on town water and sewer, you really don't have to worry so much about extracting the, the wetlands out of the, the total acreage because you don't have to worry about a septic system.
Yeah, yeah.
So if, if we combined 14 Winter, right, and the vacant lot, that would be 2.66 acres.
Right, right.
You know, there's, there's an advantage to keeping them separate, right? Because at some point, you know, there may be a desire to convey them separately. But, but if it were necessary to merge them, I certainly would entertain that.
But particularly with that new piece that you acquired at the back end, if that, I can see an issue if that were to remain a separate lot and eventually conveyed to a different owner, then again, you've got a landlocked lot with needing a right-of-way across the front part of the lot that could be a separate owner. So I can see that, I think it would be to your advantage and to everybody's advantage to merge that new piece at least with the 14 Winter Street lot.
Yeah, okay.
That's, that's a thought.
Yeah, got it, got it. And in terms of the, the math on the coverage, right? I assume at 2.66 acres, there would be, you know, plenty of, of land area, right?
I, I would suggest that you look very carefully at whatever standards are in our zoning ordinance.
Yep.
50% rule still for Ashland?
That, Susan, you know the percentage? I'm trying to, in the we're in village residential.
Right.
And.
I believe you, you can't be, so what was the exact question? There can't be more than 30% coverage of buildings and not impervious surface.
On the chart.
When you get into multi-housing, which I guess you can sort of skirt that issue that if each individual house is, is less than three units, then it doesn't have the same, quite the same impact as, as one building with three or more. I think the, the parking issue is the same, that every, every dwelling unit now in town has to have two allotted parking spaces off, off-street.
Yeah.
But that doesn't seem to be one of your problems here.
But it does say on that chart on section 2.3 in the zoning ordinance, for that zone, maximum lot coverage would be 35%.
Yep.
Yep.
Yeah, we would, we would be, if we, especially if we combined the lots, we would be well under 10%.
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
So sometimes, yeah, some of the math might work out better. I mean, you can look at it both ways. You can kind of work it out if they remain two, two lots. But if you had any thoughts of developing the back lot, then it has to be, I, I guess, there has to be access that is then easemented right-of-way.
Front.
To always have it accessed by whoever happens to own it. And you could also look at the numbers that if you, if you merge it into one lot, then what other, you know, consequences back and forth which, which play to your advantage or not? So that's certainly worth a look. It seems just a first, fresh look at this, that it might be easier for you just to merge the lot line.
Yeah.
Then again, that, that is, that is pretty simple to do. It doesn't require public hearings and notifications and any of, any of the paperwork that's involved. It's just, it goes to the registry of deeds to basically erase a line between two lots that is owned by the same person.
Yeah.
Got it. And you're talking about merging the lot with 14 Winter, but
Yes.
Wouldn't have to merge 10 Winter. It would just be the two bigger lots.
If you're not including any of the, the acreage on 10 Winter Street within your calculation, you could keep it separate. The, I, to me, the big concern is that back new piece of property that is landlocked.
Right.
If it's not, if it's, if it's not part of that front, front lot. If it stays as a separate lot, as Susan said, it's a landlocked lot. You need access to it across another piece of property.
But it, well, it does have a right-of-way across this existing driveway.
But does it go all, does it go all the way down to that new section? The map, the map that Tony did does not show that.
Got it, yeah, we'd have to, we'd have to check that. And, you know, given the proposed situs of these new units, you wouldn't want a right-of-way through there anyway. So I think the effect would be to effectively extinguish that.
Yeah. And again, if those, if that back portion is kept separate from the front, as Susan mentioned, you've got to deal with setbacks on both sides of that common boundary line between the front part and the back part, which eliminates, which eliminates space that you have to utilize.
Okay, whereas if we merged, we could effectively ignore that current line.
Yes, yes.
Yeah. Okay.
Now.
As a member of the
Go ahead.
The information that Tony provided to the board was this was the landlocked posso, the right-of-way did not continue onto that posso.
Yeah, that's what the, that's what the plot plan showed.
That's what we based our vote on.
Yeah.
That it was a landlocked posso.
Got it.
Okay. A couple just clarification questions. On 14 Winter Street, you said, how many units are in that front building? Did you say six units?
So there's two buildings. There are five units in the larger building, and then there's the standalone unit behind there.
Okay.
The six, yep, so six units total.
Okay, six total. And looking at the plot plan, both of those buildings encroach into the setback of that lot. In fact, are almost up against the boundary of the neighboring lot. When you look, when you begin to look at your other buildings and locate them on the lot, please be very aware of, and I know these are pre-existing buildings. The, the buildings are pre-existing. But what you don't want to do is increase any non-conformity. You don't want to in, in, encroach on any of your other setbacks. So be very careful on that because, yeah, that, those, those front buildings are pre-existing non-conforming, but we don't want to increase that, that issue.
Agreed, yeah. And the best location really is actually right in the middle of
Okay.
of the lot. The, I suppose, I suppose that at one point it could get closer to 10 Winter. But even though, even though we also own 10 Winter, we still have the same setback issue there.
Yes, you do.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes.
Okay. And the setback is how?
Front, front setback is, I just added here. Front setback is 35 feet, rear and side setbacks are 15.
15 side setbacks.
You'll be concerned with the rear and side setbacks if it's all one lot.
Yeah.
Yeah. And see, Susan mentioned.
Just the structure, not the, not the parking spot earlier there, just the structure.
It would be impervious surface. If you're going to pave, if you're going to pave driveways, then that comes into that coverage.
15 feet, yeah.
Yeah. I think right now probably all your driveways and parking are pretty much gravel.
Those are gravel there.
Yeah, so those, those are not going to impede on that impervious surface.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. There are other, there may be a few other techniques to deal to avoid impervious and make pervious other than gravel, but that's, that's a decision you'll make. The units, Susan mentioned the two parking spaces per unit. That's in the, that's section 3.2 of the zoning ordinance. Also in the building regulations, keep in mind that the minimum size of a dwelling unit is 750 square feet.
Okay, yeah.
Kathleen.
Is that?
Yes, go ahead. That's all right, go ahead.
That's the living area.
The living area.
I hadn't thought about a garage for these units, but that might be an interesting thought.
No, that, that is dwelling space, living space. So your bedroom, your kitchen, your bathroom, et cetera. Yeah. Kathleen, do you have other questions?
No, I was mostly concerned about the right-of-way.
Okay, yes.
It would be advantageous to make that a contiguous lot and keep, so you would have two posses. You have 10 and 14. You have 10 as a, as a lot, as a posso, and 14 with the new lot merged with it.
Yeah.
Then right-of-way would then be able, you'd be able to access that with putting in a road. If I think you kept it separate, you would act, I think you might actually, you would have to put in a road to meet specs for emergency vehicles. If you, if you didn't, you know, if you wanted to.
Your road, your road driveway, whatever you want to call it, within the lot.
Yeah, access to the.
Would have to be, yeah. Because you will want to make sure that fire truck or ambulance could get down to the back end of the lot as far as.
The, the driveway we're talking about actually would, it wouldn't be much longer than it currently is.
Oh, okay.
It's almost, it's almost already at the site.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
It probably doesn't show it quite that on the plot plan, but that, yeah.
But, but you're saying whatever, whatever additional
Whatever you have.
Distance would have to, yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah. Paula, do you have some questions, comments?
I was just concerned about the, the access to the, to the back lot, but it only because you said the driveway you were talking about at the first of the conversation went to 10 and to 14 Winter Street. And I was concerned if there was any sort of driveway access to the back lot if you're planning to build on it. To make sure, as I say, there, there's access for the, the tenant to get, to get in and out. And as Margene has pointed out, emergency vehicles.
Yeah, yeah. So that will, that will be, become part of your, your design that you work on is driveway access space.
Yeah. Yeah, and the thought, the thought is that these units would actually face that vacant lot. So the goal would be to, the goal, I mean, which is, which is very nice. It's an attractive spot. So the thought is that you, you wouldn't want to do something there. You'd have nice, quiet units that look out over into the woods.
Okay. Interesting. Okay. I would keep in, keep in touch with us as you begin to work on, on your layout and design as you're ready. Anytime you've got questions, come back to us, you know, run options by. Or if you've got some questions or concerns, definitely keep in touch with us. And.
It sounds like a great idea.
Okay, good, good. That was one of my, one of my questions is, you know, is this of interest? Is there a need? Are you supportive?
I, yes.
I would definitely concur that it's, it's a definite need for that type of housing. Having looked for it to the point of giving up and having to build our own personally. It, it's, it's a much-needed version of housing for both starters and especially for those who are wanting to age in place. And certainly your track record in town for, for wonderfully maintaining all your properties is certainly a plus that this town needs, so.
Thank you.
Yes, yes. And it's, and it's, there's not a lot of space within the center of town where something like this could be added.
Right, it's nice to be in town and have.
It is, it is, yes.
People could walk to services.
Yes.
Right.
Yeah.
Yep. So, so, okay, well, that, that's great. Thank you so much for the time. And what, what would be my specific next step? And, and, you know, with who and when and?
Well, I would, when, when you're ready with your, your design, layout, whatever, then come in with the applications. And then we go through the, the whole site plan review. Now this would, Susan, this would be regular site plan review, right? Or do we?
I guess, well, if it falls some, somewhere under the, the, the definition of a complex of several different units that are all being developed at the same time by the same person, then it probably would, would necessitate a site plan review.
Definitely.
And we've worked very closely with the new building inspector to make sure everything was, was done with the least amount of time wasted in between steps. That I think the communication is there now that it's that things could line up, that we wouldn't be holding you up for, you know, weeks or months at a time for any kind of approvals of any sort, so.
But it will require a regular full site plan review.
Mm-hmm.
Would you consider it a cluster development?
You mean an initial site plan review? Once it's been reviewed and improved, we will be just here with the building inspector.
Right, yes. Site plan, site plan.
An initial one.
Site plan review first, and then as construction starts, you deal with the building inspector with permits and, and, and if you, be careful if you need anything with DES, depending on how close you're coming to any wetlands or just be very careful on that. But yes, site plan review first and then building inspector and permits.
Got it. Okay.
So does that fall, just a quick question. Does that fall into the overlay for Squam Lake still? Because we know the rules are different there.
No.
I don't believe it does.
Not this location, no.
Like that location.
It would be wetlands.
It'd just be straight wetlands.
Yeah, yeah, there's no overlay. Yeah, yeah, there's no overlay in that area.
At this point, they have not been defined as a prime wetland by DES or the town, so.
I didn't think they were, I looked at them.
Yeah, so it doesn't fall into that category of, of scrutiny, as it were. Uh, but still, just be careful where the boundaries are, just for your own benefit as well.
Yeah.
Not, not really going to change topography any to do the project, that's the nice part.
Yeah, right. It's a good level spot, but, but it is within two hundred and fifty feet, I think, of the bottom of that hill. Is that, is two hundred and fifty feet the distance?
Well, it's that, no, you would have to read the new wetland regulations.
Yeah.
Draw a line.
Yeah, that's, that's a different, different regulation.
Shoreline is different.
I got it.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, okay, so we'll do that, yep.
Okay.
What else? Any other guidance or suggestions?
No, um, as I said, keep in touch with us as you, as you do this. If you want to stop, if you want to come in and run, uh, a possible one by us first before you actually do the site plan re, application, that's, that's fine, we can do that.
Okay, great, great, thanks so much, I, I appreciate the, the time, thank you.
Thank you very much. And we look forward to this project.
Okay, good, good, likewise.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Thanks, bye-bye.
Bye.
Thank you.
Okay, now, the next thing on our agenda. Okay, um. I want us to start thinking a little bit, and maybe not in detail tonight, but I want to start thinking about goals for this year. Uh, obviously, one, I think, major goal that we have to deal with is the master plan. Finishing, reviewing the recommendations, finalizing what we want to do for survey, how we want to attack the master plan, whether one chapter at a time or the process. Any thoughts? We'll come back to this and at another meeting too. But any thoughts on maybe any other goals for the year?
Do we have any other ordinances that would be of value to review that are, uh, more than ten years old?
Um.
I haven't, I haven't looked at any.
Yeah.
Um, you know, that we shouldn't go from nineteen eighty-one to two thousand-
Absolutely, yes, that was-
That one was also one of those discovered ones.
Yeah, that was sprung on us, we had no idea that even existed, yeah.
Well, the, the other one that's under the planning board purview that hasn't really been looked at in a while is, is driveway regulations.
Yes, okay.
And once again, it's possible to work with our new building inspector for any kind of coverage or, or anything else that might be, um, in need of addressing or updating.
Yeah, yeah.
Confusion, who, who issues the building permit?
Yes, yes.
There's no confusion if you read the regs, but, you know, I've had this discussion many times.
Yeah.
And I had this discussion with Scott too, and I told him, right there on the website, it is the, how should you put it? The vernacular that, uh, has been, um, repeated year after year after year, that people think is how it's managed and it's not.
Yeah.
Is clearly stated on within the, uh, the documents of the planning board, the way you know.
So we'll take a look at that. Are there any sections within the zoning ordinance that, uh, we might need to look at? Maybe it'd be a good idea for us to, all of us individually, to read back through the whole zoning ordinance.
I, I haven't, I haven't-
Yeah, and see if there are any issues. I think there are a variety of little inconsistencies, or a variety of old terms versus new terms. A lot of little minor things, but if there's any major section that we need to look at.
We talked about making the style consistent, so e, even if
Yes.
if it's going through and finding ways to renumber and make things more, um, consistent in how, how the, the readability and
Yes.
Some of them, the indents are so crazy that it just creates extra pages to have to read.
And different sections use different outline formats, hierarchy.
Yeah, it looks messy.
Yeah, it does. So that obviously can be cleaned up. I still have an issue with the junkyard
Ah.
section.
Um, yes, we've tried on that one.
Yeah, I haven't given up on that one.
Caught it, caught it.
So anyway, so that gives us a few things to think about, we'll come back to this maybe at the next meeting. And kind of put, so, in the meantime, kind of review all of our, our various documents and see if there's anything, um, that we, that you think we really need to look at. Okay.
Mardine, are we going to vote on the, um, excavation ordinance tonight?
Uh, we should, we had, um, no comments. Uh, again, that, the one person who does have an excavation site was invited to the meeting. I don't-
I get kind of low off the radar, think that we have done it and we go, oh, no, we didn't.
Yeah, you're right. Um, so actually, I would entertain a motion to approve the excavation regulations.
You make that motion.
Okay, I need a second.
Second.
Okay. Roll call vote, Paula?
Aye.
Kathleen?
Aye.
And Mardine, aye. Okay. Uh, the, there's only one thing we will need to do with the excavation regulations. We now need to put together the application form. So we'll start working on that.
There is an official form that you fill out, that the planning board fills out to give to the town clerk to officially file them, and I think we should also send a copy to OSI.
Yes, yes.
So that, they are, they are officially, um, filed that they are working regulations.
Yes.
Thank you, Susan.
Okay. So go to the town clerk and to OSI. Yeah, okay, we'll take care of that. Does that need to include the application form too? Or is it primarily the regulations?
I think it's basically the regulations, then your, your application form is just something you create.
Create and, and adjust and revise anytime we need to.
Right, and that doesn't, that doesn't need to go through this whole process.
Okay, but we will get that done fairly quick. Okay, um. Let's see, I've included, the last time we looked at our recommendations in the master plan, and just to recall, we had pulled out all the recommendations from each chapter and started going through those recommendations and updating things that we knew had occurred since those recommendations were made, or what hadn't occurred. Uh, so just kind of updating notes on the recommendations to enable us then to go back and also review the chapter that those recommendations come from to be in our revision process. We had gone through, uh, we had done chapter one, land use, chapter two, transportation, and chapter three, housing and development, housing and demographics, I mean. We printed up a copy for each of you, and you'll see a couple just, um, there are some, most of our update notes are in black, there are a few update notes here and there, and more as you go through the other chapters in red. Those are notes that Susan has put together. Uh, so I've added those to what we had already done and inserted those in sections that we haven't gone to yet. So as we go through those, we'll change those, we'll incorporate all of those within it. So the next one that we will have to start going through will be natural resources. I don't think I'm going to start that tonight, but I wanted to make sure everybody had that. Uh, I think at our next meeting, we'll try to pick off a chapter. We'll do, uh, go through at least chapter four, maybe five, five isn't five isn't too long. So maybe chapters four and five, we'll go through those recommendations. If you see anything on the chapters we've already done, if you see anything that has changed since we even, uh, added those update notes, if there's anything that you can think of that we've missed or that has occurred since then, just let me know and we'll add those in. So, we'll keep those updated. So we'll, we'll try two more chapters next meeting, and then at some point shortly after, we'll have to start a discussion again on what we want to do for survey, reaching out to the community, how we want to start and, and what chapter we want to start with. So we've got some decisions to make on that.
Um, are we going to ask anybody to, um, help us? Collect some of the data like we did with the college before?
Yeah, that will be part of our discussion, we've got to make, we've got to look at, I think some of the, I think some of the possibilities for assistance have probably changed since we first talked to them. So I think that's the discussion we'll have to have.
Yeah, certainly in the past, it was LRPC, and it was by town vote, two years in a row for ten thousand dollars each year for the, the total rewrite, because when we started this in two thousand and ten, we had picked, we had basically had to start over again from the nineteen eighty-four version.
Right, right.
There was, there had been some leftover money that had been held. And it was about four thousand dollars worth, which then just seemed to have disappeared into the general fund.
Yeah.
Even though it was money specifically voted for this specific purpose of updating, which I, I felt at some point should have been held for updating on a regular basis. But we don't have a warrant article in at this point to ask for any more, for money to, um, to pay LRPC. So we're going to have to find our way with, with what other resources we can come up with to update rather than have to rewrite totally, so.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah. And as far as data, data collection, that'll depend on what kind of survey we want to do, what, how extensive the survey will or will not be, and we'll figure out a way to deal with that.
Okay.
Yeah. Um. Okay. Uh, Levi Bradley is with us, and like to ask, what do you, what is, what is your issue tonight?
How can- I, I don't have an issue, I just, um, I guess I was understanding that maybe there was going to be some discussion about, some lot line adjustments and/or subdivision of, uh, scribbler building. So I just wanted to join for informational purposes.
Okay, um. We do have a case coming to us at our January twenty-seventh meeting that deals with a potential lot line adjustment with that, that section of the mill. That is an application that has been filed. I know you are considering going a different direction. We are kind of caught between two different potential applicants and potential resolutions. Because, um, and I think in, in your case, Levi, you did, um, you sent, uh, to the planning board a, um, the an application that, that Susan did let you know was very incomplete. Uh, we, when you file an application with the board, every piece does have to be filled out. So I think, uh, in an email, I think Susan communicated to you what sections were missing, uh, what you need to do. And be very careful when you fill out the application to indicate the correct owner, correct agent. Okay, that's very important. The owner of the property is the one who is applying for whatever that change is being requested. That owner of the property can designate another person to represent him or herself. That is under the agent, but the owner of the property is the one that is the primary, uh, name on the application. Please, any questions you have as far as filling out the application, uh, get in touch with Susan, make an appointment to meet with her anytime that she's available, she can work with you through it. That's, Susan, do you have any, want to add anything right now?
Uh, no, I, I think, um, Levi did get in touch with me and, and we did talk about the statistics of the two conflicting scenarios for the same exact piece of property.
Yes.
Um, and I think you also have some, uh, information from Susan Slack, the, the planner from LRPC about either way this plays out, if the planning board can or would possibly approve both scenarios, the one that, that will count is the one that is, the deeds are filed at the registry of deeds that seals the deal as to where boundaries are.
Yes.
So, um.
And I have up on the screen right now, um, and this will be important for both conflicting applicants in this particular case, that approval by the planning board, whether it's a lot line adjustment or a subdivision, approval of the planning board just indicates that, that change is in conformance with our regulations or what exceptions we need, we decide to make. But nothing becomes final until the property owner files the deed and the plan with the registry of deeds. That's when it becomes final. So we could potentially have two applications with two different parties looking at a way to deal with a same piece of land, but until one becomes an owner of that property and files all the deeds and all the appropriate records with the registry of deeds, that's the one that then becomes final. Okay. Um, and that, um, that would be a note, um, that would be part of the notice of decision. Depending on that, um, on the case. So I think that's something to keep in mind.
Will the, uh, town be voting on, on that? On, let's say I get the completed, uh, application submitted, both of those would be up for, um, being discussed and voted on by the January twenty-seventh meeting, because I would understand?
No, we have one application before us.
Okay.
That has been officially filed.
Right.
It will be presented to the board on January twenty-seventh.
Okay.
And that is the application from the other party.
Right.
Okay, we do not-
Is there a-
When, when we get a, a complete application from you, there is a timeline. We need, and that's all prescribed by, by both local ordinances and state laws. Timeline as far as notifying all the abutters, uh, posting the, um, the application acceptance and public hearing. Okay, so there, there is no way at this point that two app, these two applications could both be presented on January twenty-seventh.
That's what I was getting at, for basically a, a deadline for, um, for that. And what is the next, um, the, the next avail, or the next soonest it could be? Concerned, given it was completed today?
Yeah, I think that this, the second week, the second Thursday of this month would get you on the agenda for the, the first meeting in February. Uh, that gives the adequate time for the minimum of ten calendar days, not including the meeting itself and the date of publication for the ad that would have to be in the paper, et cetera. So, um, in order to process the application, and, and again, you need, you need to make sure that you have the, uh, this, the surveyed site plan, um, ready to submit. So depending on how fast- So depending on how fast you can get that done. Because you have, you have to be indicating where the new boundary line would be. And only a certified, a licensed surveyor can put that on this, on a map.
So. Cause you need to indicate exactly where your property is gonna begin and end, building wise and land wise.
Yep. And you said, I'm sorry, second Thursday would.
Let me, I'll give you a date in just a moment here. If you get it to us by January 13th, that's actually next Wednesday.
Wednesday.
We could, January 13th, we could have it on the agenda for February 3rd meeting.
By February, I'm sorry?
For the February 3rd meeting.
Third. Okay.
Any later than January 13th, it would bump it to at least February 24th.
Okay. And do you happen to know, or does anybody know that if this property is considered in the flood risk area?
I.
I believe it is. In the hunkit year flood zone.
I think so.
Also impacts your insurance there, but. And it is in the squam overlay.
Yes, yes. And I do know the town office has flood zone maps. But that's, yeah, that gives you the basic information.
I would, I would, I would like those flood zone maps. It's, and a more easily, more easily accessible by the public. Because we were a little concerned where they were finally.
I think.
Presented to us that.
Yeah, I'm not sure whether they're with the town clerk right now.
That's where they.
I think so.
Get, pull them off the shelf and hand it to them.
But there is also a way to look them up online. I don't have the link right now.
You have to go through Granite.
Yeah, yeah.
And the FEMA.
Yeah, and I believe FEMA is, is getting around to updating them too. Because we really asked that question when we were working on the hazardous mitigation plan that they hadn't been updated in quite some time. And FEMA is just getting around to looking at those maps again.
We did have a nice map, full-size map that was upstairs at one point that the conservation commission used. But it was removed and I don't know where it was. Probably in that box of miscellaneous maps. Unlabeled.
Okay, any other questions Levi?
One small question.
Sure.
Regarding an easement, when it says non-inclusive, that means it's not specific. Is that correct? Like a parking easement?
A burning question here.
That is, is it in the deed to that property? We don't have, we generally don't deal with the deeds and what is language that's in the deeds. That's usually not within our purview. That is something you may have to make an effort to find out more about.
How'd you phrase it?
Okay. So reading right from the, the deed, it says, "The property is conveyed together with a non-exclusive license for parking of up to eight cars on Lot 1711-7."
Okay, non-exclusive. Run that by me again, I'm gonna jot down the phrasing. Non-exclusive.
Non-exclusive license for parking up to eight cars on Lot 1711-7.
Non-exclusive.
Up to eight cars, okay. In other words, not specific spots, but somewhere within that.
I guess I'm trying to look for clarification on that, just to be sure.
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah.
Seems big.
Yeah.
Yeah, they aren't marked parking places.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, and I'd have to kind of look at that too. Because there's some documentation that we were, was submitted to us that there's 35 parking spaces there. And, and I would, I would really like to have that actually measured out. Because we have, we have a definition of what a parking space is in the zoning ordinance. And trying to visualize 35 cars parked in that space is a stretch.
So that may be something you'll have to sort out a little bit. Investigate further, yes. Okay.
That's it from me then.
Okay, thank you very much. And if you have any, and keep in touch with Susan as far as getting your application in and, and so on, okay?
Yeah, I'll be in the office tomorrow. I never make it by 8:30, not quite, but I'm obviously there way past noon, so.
Yeah, but the best, the best way is email, the planning board email. And if, and ask to, you know, set up an appointment or whatever. Yep. Okay. Thank you very much Levi.
So by the way, Susan, the petition warrant article that was submitted for Parkway referred to it as a class six road.
Well, I guess it would, it certainly is something that DPW should know whether or not they have been maintaining it or not. Cause again, the basic definition of a class six is it now is now not maintained and subject to bars.
Bars and gates and bars, yes. Me, it was the gates and bars that made me take it. Knowing that class six can utilize those structures.
Yeah. Just for, let's see, I'm gonna share something in just a minute here. See if this is the right one. Okay. Let's see here. I'm just pulling up something here. Okay, this is just to review what, what we've got coming up. At this top part, if you can see the screen here, this top option, or it says current configuration. Is the current, we've got a lot A that includes a building. And we've got a separate, here's the boundary line, a lot B, which is a different owner. So this is the current configuration of what Levi was just talking about and the other application we've got coming. This is the current configuration. Our application that we are going to be looking at, at our next meeting is moving this boundary line that's here over to here to move this building to become part of Lot B. Okay, that is basically a lot line or boundary line adjustment. Okay. The other option that will eventually come to us is this one, where that building will become a separate lot from, be separate from both A and B. It'll become its own lot in between. That will, that will entail a subdivision application.
My understanding is he wanted a portion, I'm pointing at the screen like you can see me. A portion of Lot A also.
Well, I don't know. This is just, this is just a very rough, basic visualization.
Building that we know that to.
That's right, that's right. Whatever, whatever he's got in mind, I don't know specifics. But this is the concept of what he wants to do is get, take this piece as a separate lot, separate from A and B. So this is the other one that will come to us.
Can you send this to us because?
Yes, yes. I want, I did this because I wanted to, I wanted to put it in a simple comparison that we could see what happens.
And this is it, this is simple and.
Yes.
Anybody who is not familiar with the buildings now don't need to go down there and look at it.
No, no, no. But this is the concept. This, this at the top is the current. Our next meeting, the application will show moving the boundary line so that this building becomes part of this lot. And then the other application, if and when it comes in, will be this scenario.
I see, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and again, to make clear that the planning board, current planning board will not make the same mistakes as the past planning board of allowing boundary lines through physical building.
Right, right.
So to understand where this, this new boundary line is going to be, our proposed boundary line is going to be, really needs to show that, and it's, it's hard to tease out some of these buildings because they're so interconnected, especially with the below ground. As to how this, how this would look. And the difference between subdivision and the lot line is the lot line will add to one existing. And I think the, what it takes from the other one, the other one is still of standard size that it wouldn't be a problem.
Right, right.
Have to at least question when it's subdivided, what this new lot would be as far as a conforming or non-conforming size.
As an individual lot.
Yeah. And what, in the other scenario is this building is still attached to another building that it's lots.
Yeah, and that's, that's part of the whole very complex underlying issues that we'll have to deal with too. And again, this is, I had this up earlier. This came from Susan Slack and I think.
That was excellent, yeah, yes.
Very important language, I think, to make sure that we put in, particularly for either one of these two cases.
She makes a very. In my opinion, this is understandable. This is.
Right, yeah.
Cause if, if the lot line goes through, but prior to its deeds being actually registered.
Right.
Then the second scenario could possibly go through and then it would just be a race to whoever.
Yeah.
Gets the money down and changes the deeds. Because if the first one went through and the deeds were filed, then the second one is impossible because now he's not subdividing off Lot A anymore. He'd have to subdivide off Lot B, which is not.
Another whole step.
So all we, all we would do was accept the plans as completed with the caveat.
In a sense, this would be a condition. That in, in a sense, it may not be the right term, but this becomes a condition. Basically that the whatever, whether it's a lot line adjustment or subdivision doesn't become final until the owner records the deeds with the registry of deeds. And then which.
The owner of record for that particular piece of property. Whether it goes to B or stays with C or becomes C.
And then the other case, the other scenario becomes moot. Yep.
Right. So I guess the, the only other thing is there's one particular player in this whole thing who has remained silent and has orchestrated this whole confusing scenario.
Competition in a sense.
Yes.
Yes.
Little drama.
Yeah. Do, what's the feeling from the rest of the board about trying to get in touch with the person common to both of these scenarios? To clarify information or just inform him of what's going on?
I would be afraid at this point it could make it even more complicated.
Okay.
Two applicants with wanting this same thing to add a third person in, like make it even.
Except that third person who's really the primary person.
Yeah, it's like a custody battle without asking one of the. Parents about it.
Yeah, has given the right to represent him as an agent to two different people. Yeah.
For two outcomes.
Yeah.
I would think, I would venture to guess that this person is just looking for someone to purchase the property at the terms that he's looking for.
So we'll see how, well, we'll see what communication we have over the next couple of weeks and see what happens next meeting and see what, what comes in. And we'll just take it step by step. And if we, and I think, keep in mind that when we have the hearing on the particular lot line adjustment or subdivision, whichever one it is, if we have questions, we do not need to make the final decision that same night as the public hearing. We have to watch timelines, but we do not have to make that decision. But, but we also need to be very careful that any questions we have, we come up with during the public hearing. Yep. So we'll, so that's just a few things on the process. Okay, so let's put that issue aside. One last thing on the Farnham issue. What's the, the latest communication we had to Mr. Farnham? Was to indicate that the waiver of a site plan review had been denied. And Susan, in her email to him, explained what he needed to do. I think I've got that here somewhere. You attach the site plan review application, offered to help him fill out the form, possibility of needing some contact with DES. And you mentioned the hours. Have we heard anything back from him yet?
No.
No, okay, okay. So we are.
And, and actually, the building inspector has done at least two, two drive-bys. One in which the, he was able to see the interior use of the building as well as what's going on on the exterior. And he has also voiced his concern. And it was recommended that he get in touch with the fire chief or certainly some, somebody from the fire department to arrange an inspection that they could both conduct simultaneously for the life and safety concerns and the building code concerns. And take it from there.
Yeah. So we'll just keep on top of this and see.
Cause I had forward, I had forwarded the citizen's concern about this.
Yes.
Previously, along with the notice of decision that his waiver had been denied and the reasons for it. So the, the building inspector is fully aware of, of that. And as is the town manager and the select board. So whatever next steps happen, it's, it's sort of out of planning board. We're not enforcement and we, and we made a decision and we're awaiting for another application that was requested. But as of this time, the other concerns about life, safety and pollution and whatever other concerns have been expressed are in other people's hands.
Yeah. So again, we'll keep everybody informed as we hear anything else.
We keep it as an agenda item until this.
Well, we'll just, I won't put it on the agenda. Just if it comes back, then, if something comes in, then we'll deal with it. Anybody else have any other business comments?
I guess I, I just have one in, in my office hours. It was very clear from the beginning that Thursday was gonna be the usual day. I also said that between the two boards, we're meeting on the first and fourth Wednesdays and the second Thursday, that either that previous Monday, it used to be the Monday and/or the Tuesday would be my day in the office to prepare only for land use. There seems to have been some confusion generated by that. So I am certainly willing to set in stone some kind of hours that can be on, on the web. some kind of hours that can be on, on the website and be answerable to them, but not be answerable to any other time that somebody just, once you're immediately.
It probably would be helpful if we had something specific to put on the, up on the website, or, or as part of an email as we get questions.
Yeah.
But, yeah.
Because we originally decided on a Thursday because it's the day after a meeting, so there's follow-up from meeting decisions. And it's also the day after the deadline for applications, so if an applicant floated in, I had something to look at on that Thursday. And could immediately address it, so if there were questions to go back to the applicant or, or otherwise, it could be dealt with promptly, so that was the rationale for the Thursdays.
So, uh, what are you thinking of Tuesdays and Thursdays, or just Thursdays?
Well, when, when, with the new building inspector, it also made sense that I came in the Tuesdays and Thursdays, that he was there as well to help him get oriented and do the turnover from, from what had transpired before he was hired. Uh, in some ways, though, it is nice to have the day in the office to be focused on only the land use stuff, to be on a Monday rather than the Tuesday, where we're both there together.
Yeah.
Uh, and we both be there on Thursdays in, in any case, so.
Yeah, yeah.
I was leaning back towards Mondays, looking at my previous time sheets when I first started at the beginning of August. It was pretty much Mondays and Thursdays.
Yeah.
The occasional Tuesday for whatever reasons.
Yeah.
Um, but I always felt I was answerable to Mardine as the chair, or to Dave as the chair of the ZBA, that I would be available to do the work that was necessary for the boards.
Right.
And the fact, I got kind of sucked into all that building inspection.
Yeah.
Kind of really threw, threw off a whole lot of stuff, so.
Yeah. The Monday before, uh, planning board meeting is, I think, valuable for the planning board because Monday, it still gives us time to post, if we, if we haven't had a chance to post it before. Monday is a good time to post, to get, uh, if we need to make copies for members in prep for the Wednesday meeting, so. So I do have a kind of a preference for Mondays, but.
And so Susan wants Monday, I could go in on Tuesday and pick up the paperwork.
Yeah, yeah.
That would, that would, that would work for me too.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, I will need hot copies since my ink seems to.
Yeah.
Now I can buy an extra large black and a regular cyan, but not magenta or yellow or regular size black.
That's, that sounds familiar, uh, where these printers get kind of temperamental. Decide, even though they're full of the ink that you require, they decide not to dispense it.
Yeah. So what, anyway, on the hours, what does work best for you, Susan? Just let us know. And, and also things, things sometimes have to change, depending what.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I myself have to make adjustments, because now I'm not just like four or five minutes away.
Right.
Getting closer to the 25 minutes, and with the snow, when you have to brush off your car and everything, so.
Absolutely.
I don't always make it to 8:30, I usually make it by 8:45 at the latest.
Yeah, yeah.
And I was trying to set it in stone that I would be leaving at 12:30, and many a time, I am there beyond that, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Nine to one.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, okay. Anything else? So next meeting, we have, uh, John Glidden and boundary line adjustment for that case. I'd like to be able to do a little bit on the master plan recommendations. And, um, again, if anyone has any, uh, specific things that you think we should look at this year, let us know. All right, anything else?
Well, just a flash of the past too, I had started that, embarked on that design plan, which was.
Oh, no.
Standards, which was one of the recommendations out of the plan, uh, out of the master plan.
Yes.
So, once again, as we get to those chapters, to think about what that entails, because.
Yes.
You know, the, it's interesting, the flack we got for having to allow Dollar General, because there was nothing to say, nothing that gave us, empowered us to tell them exactly what to do.
What it should look like.
Things that were compromised. Um, and everybody, well, so many people hated it, of course, now they, they are, their heads are exploding because it's closed for a brief time. But it, it also did trigger that if anything else, and everything that could possibly be built in the center of town, if we don't have some form of standards, and we decided that rather than an ordinance that had to go through voting, and then was, was not being able to have waivers and, uh, flexibility, that it should be attached to the site plan regulations. So, you could probably pull out at some point the draft of how far we got, looking at the one from Wyndham and a couple of other towns, as to what would be app, applicable to downtown Ashland. Um, and kind of start to chip away at that again.
Yeah. Oh, that, maybe that's, I think we should look at the site plan regs anyway. A lot of those criteria on that second page, I'm not sure, as we've gone through some other cases, are, is there anything we would want to add to that? But let's take a look at, let's take a look at the site plan regs. Take a look at that, and then look at the criteria and the standards.
I think they're tied together, as previously decided, that, that any kind of design standards, and they don't have to be, again, monstrously, I mean, like Freeport, Maine.
Oh, no.
Home that's unbelievable about everything from the signage to how everything has to look. To at least finding a model that, that works for maintaining the, the rural character of the town, which has sort of been expressed in the master plan, but that doesn't really, isn't really clearly defined in some fashion, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Like, like a pitched roof instead of flat roofs.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Or at least having facades or something that make, that, that, similar to the character that's, because certainly commercial zone one has kind of crept along the roadway to.
Yes.
Allowing, allowing all the generic fast food, et ceteras, on one end of town, as to how far you want to have that creep into the rest of the town center.
Yeah, yeah. So, so I'll add that to our list, take a look at that, yeah.
What about the electric stations that we've put in at Dunkin' Donuts as electric cars become more prevalent? Will that have an impact, um, on how we see ourselves, or how we need to accommodate that?
It could. I do know that some towns do have regulations dealing with electric vehicle charging stations. I don't know, I couldn't tell you any specifics, but I have seen that referenced in some towns. I don't, we can, we can inquire, we can investigate that a little bit.
I, I would just hate for it to, um, kind of, kind of proliferate.
You mean, charging, the car-charging.
Charging stations?
The, the, yeah, the same kind of charging stations we put in at Dunkin' Donuts.
Well, let's, let's, we didn't, we didn't put them in.
I'm not saying we didn't put them in, but I'm just, I'm just using that as an, as an example of.
It's also that I think they're, they're a lot less invasive in all ways than a gas station, of which we have three in town.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
No, I'm just, as I say, I'm just, I'm just asking, uh, because it's, it's something new, and whether it will impact something else further down the line, I, I, I don't know.
Yeah. It's a good thing to investigate.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. And see what, see what other towns are doing. Uh, yeah, we can do that. Okay, I think we are all set for tonight. I want to thank everybody. We're, I think we're done. Okay, so I'm going to adjourn the meeting.